On record.
Call to order, the Lincoln City City Council meeting of Monday, April 22nd, 2019, 6:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Casper.
Here.
Counselor Hinton.
Here.
Counselor Hoagland.
Here.
Counselor Kooz.
Present.
Counselor Mark.
Here.
And Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening, even on a little sunny afternoon, it's hard to come inside. We have with us, let's see, one thing I'd like to point out to counselors, if it's all right or no objection, I'm going to move K. 7 up to K., the new K. 5. And then just go in order down from there. All right? So it's great. We have then the consent agenda, we have a consent agenda which is the Liquor Control Commission item. Oh, I'm sorry, this consent agenda, I should have gone that consent agenda, under the consent agenda is the Oregon Liquor Control Commission request for full on-prem sales liquor license for Starfish Paner, the Oceanfront Hotel, and number two is the minutes for the regular meeting, minutes of March 11th, 2019, or, yeah, 19. Any questions regarding items one or two of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was absent for those minutes and I have not had time to review them on the video, so I will abstain.
Entertain a motion for the consent agenda, then?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Mark, and motion to approve consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, with Counselor Casper abstaining. Public comments, this is the opportunity for public comment, let me read, the Article 1, Section 8 of the Oregon Constitution provides, "No law shall be passed restraining the free expression of opinion or restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject whatever, but every person shall be responsible for the abuse of this right. Be advised, statements and comments by citizens under, quote, 'comments from citizens present,' unquote, or on public hearings or public comments items are solely the opinions and statements of the speaker and are not statements by the city of Lincoln City and do not represent the opinions of the city, its officers, or employees." We have Ed Drystadt.
My name is Ed Drystadt, I'm the Director of Explore Lincoln City, and what I'd like to do tonight is to follow up a little bit with an announcement that Ron made at the last city council meeting. We've all gotten, just gotten back from the Governor's Conference on Tourism, which was held in Eugene, and Lincoln City was given an award, and I'd like to read a little bit from the write-up to Travel Oregon did. It says that the Oregon Tourism Digital Marketing Award, presented to the Oregon Governors, presented at the Oregon Governors Conference in Eugene, celebrates exceptional digital marketing that brings potential travelers closer to their favorite destinations and engages them in fun and innovative ways. The award went to Lincoln City, Explore Lincoln City, for Random Acts of Fineness, which celebrates the 20th anniversary of visitors finding hidden glass floats on the shores of Lincoln City. And here's a big reason why we got the award. The digital campaign is the culmination of a multi-year effort to develop a Lincoln City brand. This effort began in 2015, which included partnerships with all city departments, and input from residents, guests, and businesses through nearly two dozen stakeholder input sessions and guest focus groups. This is not an award for my department. I've got most of my department here to recognize everything they did to make it happen, especially Scott. He was the guy that was our interface with the agency and supervised all the creative. But the way this came about, and those of you that were on city council at the time will remember, is that we presented idea after idea after idea after idea, we presented over 100 logo treatments, and it took a lot of patience and a lot of time and a lot of input to boil all that down to what became our new branding package. And it wasn't just my department, it was all the departments in the city, it was support from city council, it was input from citizens, so this award is Travel Oregon telling us that we do it right, that we're an example for the rest of the state, that we did something incredible. Talking to my peers at the conference, it's like, how in the world did you get your city council to agree to do that? You know, it was all because everybody was part of the process, and it wasn't easy, and it was hard, and, you know, we had some people that liked it and some people didn't, but I'll tell you what, we have creative that's absolutely the most fun and the most amazing and the most flexible out there, and we just got an award to prove that, so what I'd like to do is to give this to the city. I guess Ron can figure out where it goes on display and exactly what we do. It'll go in Dick's garage. But anyway, thank you all for all your help, I am so happy that I live in Lincoln City, it's a wonderful community, it's supportive, and you guys allow us to do great work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Ed, and the only disappointing thing I must say is that when we were, you know, got the sneak preview at last meeting, the quality of the filming was pretty bad, I gotta tell you.
That was, that was a-
It's amateurish.
Well, it was, it was a cellphone out in the crowd, so, you know, it was what it was. Travel Oregon had allied video there, and we are waiting to get a tape of the official thing. As soon as we get that, we'll run her on Channel 4 and let everybody see it.
Is there a way to, you know, sub out, you know, whatever Mr. Chandler had on his cellphone so we have some of quality, you know?
Yeah, well, we'll-
That would, that would be good.
I'll have it installed on Ron's cellphone, too, how's that?
It's kind of braggadocious.
Yeah.
Could I ask?
Nice, nice job.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a question, would you introduce your staff?
You know, that's a wonderful idea, and I'm a terrible manager, I should do that. How about everybody come up? Okay, this is Liz Francis. Liz is our numbers and finance person, Liz actually runs the department. We do nothing without talking to Liz.
She does a great job.
Scott is our marketing manager, he's the guy that interfaces with BPN, he's the guy that helps put together all the media schedules, everything we do goes through Scott. And Cassie, we stole away from the NewsGuard. And just to make Cassie's life miserable, we split Cassie in half. Half of Cassie is our events person, and the other half of Cassie, which is probably the bigger reason we hired her, is content generation, you know, we're in this era where you don't just buy newspaper ads or buy radio commercials or buy TV spots, like it tonight, you are the medium. We have to create content, and that's Cassie's expertise, that's what she went to school for and that's what she did at the NewsGuard, and for the most part, that's what she'll be doing at Explore Lincoln City.
That's great.
You did a great job.
Thank you very much, nice job. Susan Walkie, top that.
First of all, I'm going to remove the name, I'm not Ed Drystadt.
I think we got an old one.
Wasn't this your scene?
Yeah. We'll save it for Devil's Lake Water Improvement District Budget Committee and City Budget Committee, it'll be used. I'm here to congratulate Explore Lincoln City and also to critique their offering of the tourism grant application and guidelines. You'll notice on the first page that the date is wrong, that's an easy fix. On the third page, down under Goals, the fifth bullet point, it says, "Create new and improve current special events and festivals to attract incremental visits, incremental guests." And I don't know what an incremental guest is, it sounds like it's a part of a person. I think maybe that could be explained a little better. On the next page, when it talks about when the final report is required, it's 60 days after the event or project has been completed. If it's a week-long project, it shouldn't be 60 days from the beginning of the project or event, it should be 60 days from when it is finished, because you need the 60 days to get all your invoices received, so you know what your expenses are, and have 60 days to get that final report done. My next comment is on page 5, under Evaluation. The applicants have all sorts of timelines. The city has as long as they want to, to, I guess, endorse the Explore Lincoln City Committee's recommendations. Last year, it was about two weeks before we knew if our grants were accepted or not. And I ran up to some deadlines with my event coming up real soon. And I think that if you're going to put timelines on the applicant, the city should have some timelines, too. I think that it's reasonable to expect the Explore Lincoln City Committee's recommendations to be either changed or acknowledged within a week, maybe 10 days at the most. And then on page 7, the second bullet point under Grant Agreement, there should be an apostrophe for applicants, not a big deal, but should be right. And then on page 9, the second paragraph under Reporting Delinquency, it's not real clear. I don't know that if your marketing plan isn't submitted, but the project's completed and you complete and submit a final report, could you still get that third payment and just not have that second payment? It's, it's not real clear, I think it should be a little clearer there. And my last comment is about the legacy item supplemental information, I think that's wonderful, I think it's a great idea and it's a great addition to the grant application process, so. I will leave these with Mr. Drystadt.
Read.
All right, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who didn't have the opportunity to sign up and would like to make comment, now would be the opportunity. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on then. We have then Resolutions, we'll move to Resolutions, 2019-06, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting updated, adopting updated Explore Lincoln City Committee Grant Guidelines, repealing Resolution 2016-29. Mr. Appicello, do you have any words on the resolution?
Yeah, I know that you have handed out in front of you corrections that were made, so some of you made some comments to staff, and the gist of the comments were that the application guidelines weren't consistent with the ordinance we just adopted, because they were created about the same time, and then I got creative with the ordinance and we didn't match that with the guidelines, and all that's been corrected, so I don't know if you'd like to go over it, but essentially, the appeal to the director has been clarified, or the decision by the director and appeal to the manager has been clarified in the guidelines, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Some other, the other parts of these that are significant changes beyond what Mr. Appicello talked about is that if you go to page 6, first of all, note that the items that are in yellow are the changes that you received in your packet, the items that are in green are the ones that came as a result of a review, and Counselor Kooz had pointed, or Kooz had pointed out that there was some discrepancies between the ordinances. Most of these pertain to who's making the decision and the appeal, but please note that under the grant denials, it changes, it had listed it as 60 days, that changed to 15 days because that is consistent with what you're, you adopted in your ordinance. The other item that is of significance that we need to mention is that if you go to page, well, it's actually in about, it's in about two or three pages, there was a, there was references to the city council being a part of the approving process if it was for 25,000, more than $25,000. Well, the problem that that was, there was a couple of problems that that was creating. First of all, we were attempting to mix two separate processes. Both the department heads and I have limits on our purchasing authority, and if we, and if the purchase of something exceeds those limits, then it has to come to you. We tried to apply that to an app, to a, an application for, for a grant. Essentially, what that turned out to be was that I would then be the appeal authority from your decisions, and that is really the wrong way to do that. A better approach on this is that if you want to have a threshold at which the Explore Lincoln City Director does not have authority, then you should simply give a dollar amount and say the grants will not exceed this amount. That could be $25,000, that could be $10,000, that could be $26,000, whatever you set. A better approach to that is that if you feel that there needs to be a limit, then we should set a dollar a limit rather than making you a decision-maker, at which point then I become the appeal authority from the city council, which is really backwards.
So, I guess, is that not changed in the policy and not changed in the resolution?
We have removed those references from this document.
Okay, so then if somebody, if council feels there should be, then they'd need to make a motion?
Right, and essentially what that means is that at this point, there is not a limit that could be made on the application. That can be a little bit problematic in the sense that if it exceeds my authority to, to, or Ed's authority to approve it, it's still, before the checks cut, it's still got to come back to you. So it creates a little bit of problematic, the easiest way to do that, and one that has worked very well, and it's been able to make it so that the funds can be divvied up in a broader sense, is to have a $25,000 limit. We have, we've had no application above $24,999 because people didn't want to bring it to you as part of that process. And so, and so we have not had a case where we have awarded a grant for more than that.
And council, I guess I'll just add that this is simply a matter of delegation. At this point, you've delegated in your ordinances to the Director of, you know, the Visitor and Convention Bureau to make these grant decisions, you've set up an appeal of the Director's decision to the city manager. And I wasn't sure, but I thought we were going to keep the reference to any, anything over $25,000 is, you know, outside of the authority, so the delegation is up to $25,000. I think that would be the clearest use of these procedures, if you just had that one sentence, this delegation is up to $25,000. And then if you had a situation where you wanted to award a grant of a larger amount of money, then we could refer that to you, and there actually wouldn't be an appeal from the council to the manager, because the ordinance is only to appeal Director's decisions to the manager, so there would be no appeal if, if it was something you considered that was over $25,000. So I would suggest that you just ask that the delegation in this policy say not to exceed $25,000.
I guess the question I would have also is, we could make that amendment, but these other suggestions or that we just heard from public comment, if there's other suggestions from staff at some time of revising the policy, I would hope they would bring that back to us and even some of these comments that were made by Ms. Walkie.
Well, there's quite a bit of changes that have been made, and they've kind of been sprung on you at the last moment, and then added to that, Mrs. Walkie's comments, it would be, I think, wise and would probably be my recommendation, is for us to bring back a cleaned-up copy for you, and also, but at this point, if you want to give us some discretion as to addressing Mrs. Walkie's, or if there are ones that you want to make sure are in there or changes that we make, either, either one of those would work.
Counselors, thoughts? Any thoughts on the delegation clarification up to $25,000 for, per grant? That'd be consensus on that to be included. And then, I guess, I highlighted some of the things that Ms. Walkie pointed out that might need some further explanation, I think from her perspective of a, of a user, which would be helpful, and just take a look at that, but does anybody have a, an issue? Counselor Kooz, I know you sleep with this policy in the old days. There was anything else is?
Well, I couldn't find where she was talking about the 60 days.
I didn't see that either.
What was it, page 4?
Could we, could we ask Ed to come up and help us with this?
Well, she's got, got the old copy, oh, Ed.
Oh, he, Susan Walkie gave.
Susan's still here?
No.
I, I did see that, and I, I thought the way it read was fine, actually, I thought it was pretty clear.
What page?
That, now I'm looking for it again.
If I could bring up one other consideration, and I think, I wish Susan was still here, because I'd like to hear her speak toward it. We, the committee went to awarding grants once a year, and if you have an event that occurs around the start of the fiscal year, you're scrambling to do your event, plus you're trying to do your application, plus you're not able to report results because you don't have them yet, and you really get into a bind, Pixifest goes through that. Same thing happens if you're close to the grant award, sometimes you don't have enough time to spend the grant to do it, and that, that one-year cycle trips up things like Sandcastle Contest, because by the time you get the grant and you have the money to spend and you're ready to go, it's almost too late to do it. So as you're kicking this around, maybe that's one of the considerations that you have, if, and I'm not going to speak for the committee, and the committee would have to discuss and make a recommendation, but we never had that same pressure when it was twice a year.
I guess I can go from remembering when we started this, that I think applications were handled at every meeting, every month, if one came in, and then that seemed pretty onerous for the committee, and they asked for the, twice, I think twice a year, or maybe, maybe then, once a year.
Yeah, it was twice a year when I got here.
Twice a year, yeah, but we've, we've changed it, so now you're, you're asking, quite frankly, or suggesting, or at least bringing-
I'm just pointing out that part of the issue with timing with several events in town is either they're getting tripped up because they're, they're having to run their event and try to do their application, everything at the same time, or by the time they receive their grant, it's almost too late. And that just seems to be one of the side effects of going to an annual.
I would just, I guess what I'm suggesting is that we who don't deal with this, at least I'll speak for myself, would take the recommendation of the committee that has to wrestle with it themselves and then listen to the applicants aftermath. So I'm open to whatever would work better.
Yeah, I mean, for the committee, it would be double the work, which is one of the reasons they compressed it down to one year, you look at Travel Oregon, they only do it once a year, but theirs has the same problem that ours has right now. If you're too close to when that award is due, or the, the application is due, or when the award happens, then you almost can't do it, and that's, that's a flaw of going to an annual.
Other, other thoughts, because I would dump it right back to you with these others, if you want to insert that as we give this back to you to relook-
Well, that's something we'll need to bring up to the committee.
Yeah.
I'm not going to try to force them to do double the amount of work they're doing now, but if you want to address the issue that Susan brought up, it's not just how soon can we get back to you, it's can we do this to where your event in October has enough breathing room to where you can use the money wisely?
So I'm agreeing, and I think council is, so what we're going to do is just give it back to you and not take action on the resolution.
Okay.
And we'll have you work it out with the committee and bring back what you'd like to, to go with.
Okay.
Is that, is that all right? Other, these, a couple of things with the $25 and, $25,000, and the delegation of appeal, keep those in.
Given where I am sitting, would it be a bad thing to ask Diane Kooz to weigh in, since she was on the committee for a good number of years?
As far as?
Of twice a year, once a year?
I think twice a year became, when I was there, is that we hadn't streamlined and we hadn't said 500 words or less, and they were coming in a lot. I think twice a year works if you keep it concise. I think that's what happened, they, they were coming in, but because of events, I think twice- They were coming in, but because of events, I think twice a year is more effective for the event people because of timing. Like you said, you have a June event, but grants don't go out till July. It's, you have to think a year in advance, and we know that there's a lot that don't think that far in advance. So, but your committee would have to really look at. I would, I'd be open to twice a year. But that's your committee.
And the other, the other thing we're looking at is to, again, take a leap from Travel Oregon with our new website, when we get that up and running, which should be in late June. We want to go to online applications.
Which is great.
And just make it simple and easy, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, consider it kicked back to you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, council. Move to Resolution 2019-07. A resolution setting forth corrective measures for deficiencies identified in the City of Lincoln City, Oregon's 2017-18 Annual Financial Report. Ms. Bridges.
Good evening, mayor and council. If you recall from, I think it was the second meeting in January when the auditors were here and we submitted the audited financial statements, they did have two deficiencies that they identified. The state of Oregon requires that council actually adopt a resolution that contains a plan to address the deficiencies. So I've drafted a resolution that contains my proposed corrections for these items. The first one's kind of a hodgepodge of different things. One being reviewing things more, more quickly, putting dates when you sign off for approvals. They noted that the fuel cards that are used for our vehicles, the mileage isn't always getting put in when people are using it, and so it's harder to track that it's being used appropriately. If we have, if we have not closed out our current GL period and we find a journal entry that's an error, we do delete it. We don't do it after we've closed it, but if it's still open, we do just because it makes things a little cleaner. They didn't really like that. There might be a tracking mechanism in Casell where we could flip that on to track it and show them that we deleted it. But anyway, those are the kind of hodgepodge things, so. And then the second item was some change orders that exceeded the original bid award authorized by council, and that was addressed. Thank you, the January, it was, yeah, addressed at the January meeting with a different resolution. So are there any questions on this?
Any questions? No questions?
I don't have a question, I just want to say good job.
Oh, thank you. Sometimes it gets tedious because they are very, very thorough.
That's why we hire.
It's a good thing, yes.
Entertain a motion for Resolution 2019-7?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-07 as amended.
Second? We have a second from Mr. Hoagland. Thank you, a motion to approve with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none, thank you very much.
May I ask if someone has not had a chance to pick up their budget book, if they'd like it tonight? And I'll leave it with Ron, so one.
Great, I haven't.
Two. Anyone else? Three?
It's an awesome budgetary.
I'll bring him in and leave him with Ron.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, special order of business. We have proclamation for the City of Lincoln City 2019 National Police Week.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. You have before you this evening a proclamation proclaiming May 12th through 18th, 2019 as the National Police Week. This is something that we do every year to recognize our public safety officers who defend and protect our community, our citizens every day of the year, and give them that recognition that they deserve for the very difficult job that they do every day on behalf of the city.
If it's all right, I'll read the proclamation. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. Currently, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world converge on Washington DC to participate in a number of planned events which honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. This year, National Police Week begins May 12th, 2019, and goes through May 18th, 2019. The City of Lincoln City would like to honor the police officers of Lincoln City Police Department by proclaiming May 12th through May 18th National Police Week with the following proclamation. To recognize the National Police Week 2019 and to honor the service and sacrifices of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Lincoln City Police Department. Whereas there have been, whereas there have been 58,627 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2016, resulting in approximately 16,677 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 316 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 129 officers killed in 2017 and 231 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2019. Whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12th through 18th. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lincoln City formally designates May 12th through 18th as Police Week in Lincoln City, Oregon, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you for your service. All right, we now have a economic development issue, topic. Get back to my. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped. Yes, we are now going to do a public interview for Planning Commission position. This is item six, new six. We had one applicant. Josh, you want to come forward? We have a vacant position on the Planning Commission and, Planning Commission and the Budget Committee are two committees where we publicly interview candidates. What we've done, Josh, we'll have you introduce yourself, but each of the counselors have a series of questions in front of them. What I'm going to do is I'll start with a question, and then each counselor can field a question. We've got more, and we don't have to ask them all. So you can pick and choose, you don't have to go in order, a little freedom. I'm not as rigid as they say.
This is your mayor.
There is, there is flexibility in the ranks.
Does the applicant have the questions in front of him?
I did, I received the questions, thank you very much.
See, I throw him a curveball, he doesn't know what's coming. So, but Josh, don't mind if you introduce yourself and then take the easy one, just talk to us why do you want to serve on the Planning Commission?
Sure. Hey, Ms. Josh Brainerd, I live at 1315 Northwest 14th Street here in Lincoln City. District manager of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District here in Lincoln City as well. I would really like to be involved in the Planning Commission here, especially in my current position. I've been given, you know, a bird's eye view of everything that's going on in the city, especially governmentally. Along with that, I've seen how much room there is for improvement, how much space there is to go, and how much momentum has been building in the city in order to make those improvements. And I truly would like to be a part of that. I live here, and I always liked playing an active role in my community as well. And it seems like the Planning Commission is a great key part and way to do that.
Counselor Kuz, do you want to ask a question, please?
Start.
You could, well, I started.
So you're going to ask the question?
You get to.
You get to ask questions.
I did ask number one.
Oh, you asked him dinner. Got it, okay. So why do you want to serve on the Planning Commission?
That was mine.
Oh, that's it, okay, I didn't check it out.
That's an easy one, let me start it.
That's the easy one. So how about, how should the city balance housing affordability with regulations?
I think that we should utilize the best available demographic and economic data we have between local resources and county resources as it's collected throughout the years, especially as dynamic as that data tends to be. Use that information to develop new programs and new approaches, and maybe even changes to regulations where needed in order to improve those situations.
Thank you.
What qualities do you think make a good planning commissioner?
Well, I hope to find out. I think that a good solid knowledge of what I found the Lincoln City Planning Commission rules and procedures, which is about 300 pages, so I did not get all the way through that. I think that's a great background to get into and just kind of know the nuts and bolts of the situation, how the commission works and how they work within the city. I think the, also the ability to comprehend and apply those guidelines will also be of great value to the commission.
Thank you.
What should be the role of the Planning Commission in creating a look or image for the city?
I think that should be done mainly through local news outlets, internet and public meetings. And here in Lincoln City, we have the great resources of having a separate Chamber of Commerce Board and also Explot Lincoln City, which we've even seen tonight as making great leaps and downs for the image of our city. So being able to work in concert with them, I think, is extremely valuable resource not every city has.
Okay, I have a two-part question. One is, what are the top three planning issues facing Lincoln City?
I think that there's a lot of people that have different opinions on that. The three that stand out the most to me are the balance between residential areas and vacation rentals, affordable housing, especially regarding workforce, and infrastructure needs and improvement, which also tie in with economic needs and things like industrial areas as well.
Save my other.
I'm going to save, okay.
Well, I'd like number eight. What can the Planning Commission do to promote economic development?
I think that that is the most fun question because this is where lots of ideas come in. That's really, you know, one of the most enjoyable parts, I think, on being on a commission is being able to work through those ideas, see what works and what doesn't work, and then finally be able to land on something that does. So for Lincoln City, I think that our biggest strength is obviously our natural resources. We're an absolutely gorgeous place that exists this one place on the earth. And we have a lot of other room for improvement, underutilized, there are just areas that haven't been developed. We have areas that could, we could develop maybe bike trails or certain situations, things that I haven't heard in the past that may have been brought up. But the area and population being as dynamic as it does, maybe some of these other ideas that were once discussed could potentially work now as well. I think that we just really, as a city and as a community, need to keep our eyes open for that and be able to use those strengths that we do have. Just as we do economically use the strength of having highway one-on-one, be able to use our natural resources, you know, along with our economy.
Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you for your application and desire to do more. That's commendable, thank you. How should the Planning Commission balance the individual owner's interests with the community's interests?
That's a fun one. That one goes all the way back to Plato and Aristotle and governmental political theory. I think it's also one of the most brief answers, though, that I could come up with. It's being said that it is a delicate situation. Being part of a governmental body, I think it must, you must always put the community first and the community's interests.
Counselor, did you have a second follow-up you wanted to? Any follow-up or any counselors want to ask Josh? If not, then what we'd do is make a motion to recommend or not recommend to the Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I will move to recommend appointing Joshua Brainerd to the Lincoln City Planning Commission.
Second?
We have a motion with a second to recommend appointment to the Planning Commission? Shouldn't you just go ahead and appoint? You're not recommending to anyone? Oh, yeah.
Appoint.
Appoint, to appoint, I'm sorry. Okay, to appoint to the Planning Commission?
The motion was to appoint Joshua Brainerd to the Lincoln City Planning Commission.
I probably repeated it wrong. Could we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I don't see Planning Director here. I was going to say, I don't know when the next Planning Commission meeting is, do you?
I'm going to ride with him.
Okay, I would look toward, I don't know, if it's, there's one in April?
It's the first and third Tuesdays of each month.
In April, so it'll be May, so first Tuesday in May, be there, six o'clock.
So now, now I could ask.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and counselors.
Now I could ask, do you know Miles? That was my question.
I think, I think it may be better if you could ask if you do not know Miles and then something.
Thank you, Josh, appreciate it. Good luck, thanks for your service. All right, now we'll go to the economic development and the Lincoln City Cultural Center. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here just to speak very briefly about the Lincoln City Cultural Center request for support, which you have in your packet, the letter from Director Nikki Price. And I just wanted to mention that this has been budgeted. And because the request exceeds the city manager's spending authority, we have brought it to you for consideration. And we have the Cultural Center Board President Greg Burton and also the treasurer, John Collier, here tonight to speak a little bit about their request and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff before? Should we let her off the hook?
Could, could people speak into the microphone more?
Yes, thank you.
Why don't we bring John and Greg forward? Thank you for coming out, gentlemen.
It's our pleasure.
Why don't you, do you have something you want to say before we get into any kind of questions?
Yes, before we start, if you don't mind, I have a one page here that I'd like to pass out. I know that some of the counselors who are here tonight, three to be precise, were not here when the resolution. were not here when the resolution was originally passed. So I want to just give you a little heads up on the project. And I think what I'd like to do first is give you a little progress report on where we are on our 1.8 million funding package. There were three legs to our initial funding package. And the first one is the Cultural Advocacy Coalition, which is the lobbying group for the state legislature in Oregon and specifically the Cultural Resources Economic Fund. And I'm pleased to announce that we were selected to be one of the projects that's brought forward to the legislature this year by the CAC. And assuming that the economic fund is fully funded by the legislature this year, we believe that that will be a $600,000 contribution from the legislature toward this project. So we're very, very happy about that, and we should know about that in the next sixty days. The second leg is the private money component, which we outlined as a $250,000 goal that the Cultural Center would raise privately here in Lincoln City. And I'm pleased to say that in our really quiet phase of our campaign, which we've been in for about the last... Well, just before Christmas, we've raised almost half of that amount in pledges and contributions. And now we're entering our quiet phase, and then this summer, early this summer, we will kick off our public phase. So you may not have heard a lot about it thus far, but it has been going on and has been going on successfully. And then the third phase, of course, is the wonderful contribution from the City of Lincoln City. There was $50,000 allocated to help us pay upfront for planning and engineering, which is ongoing. And we're very happy to have that money. It's helping us, of course, get approvals from the City of Lincoln City Planning Department. So we're very happy about that. And then $150,000 contribution, which, when we made our initial ask in the budgetary cycle last year, that money was designated... So that we would have that commitment from the City of Lincoln City. The second half of the funding package consists, in a large part, from private foundations and grants that we would receive from sources like the Murdoch Fund, the Ford Family Foundation, Collins Foundation, grantors like that. And we were advised... John is kind of the expert on the grants, but we were advised by many of those that they wanted to be last in. They didn't want to be the seed money. And they wanted to see commitment from the local populace and from the city. And now we have the legislature, so we feel like all those things are falling into place. And therefore, our request to have the money and put it and mix it with the rest of our funds and be prepared to go to those foundations for the final funding amount to make the 1.8 million.
It's good to hear. Questions from council? If you may recall, through the budget process last year, this, as Greg has indicated, came through the budget and then City Council, and it was earmarked under economic development for all the reasons he stated. So I guess this is what it really says. This is time for us to cough it up and make good with it. We've been holding it and getting, you know, our 2.75% interest, so, from the state pool. From the state pool. So, given no other questions, or... And John, did you have any, or are you just ready for the check?
I'm ready to answer any question.
I hear you.
Greg covered it very well.
Mr. Mayor, so I'm looking at the letter from Nikki Price. So are we being asked to... Did you get 50,000 and you're asking for 150,000? Or you got 1,000, you're asking for 199,000?
We're asking for 199,000.
Okay. And the... Did the windows ever get fixed? Was that project done?
That was a separate...
That was a separate. But they are being manufactured as we speak. And that's going to be another beautiful component of the building. I can't thank you enough for that. With the new windows and the new outdoors, it's just going to be a showplace for Lincoln City. It's going to be gorgeous.
So the motion, I would assume, would be to authorize staff to cut the check to the Cultural Center looking at staff for the 199,000?
That's correct.
Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Parsons, to direct staff to release the 199,000 dollar...
I'll second it.
In a second, from Counselor Coos? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Good work. Appreciate it. Appreciate the progress.
I never knew this was coming.
Oh, really?
It's beautiful. Oh, my God.
So is this where I should make the pitch for May 4th? Culture, of course, banquet celebration? Is that okay?
Are there still tickets available?
And if you feel like buying raffle tickets, you know, it's a 50-50 pot, little things like that? Okay. Next is... Oh, this is where we change money with the state. 2008 Fund Exchange Agreement, Pair of Streets, Storms, Sidewalks, and Improvements. Lila?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, so this is our annual State Transportation Fund Exchange. And so they are exchanging $87,402.14. So that's what we will... That's what we have budgeted in the budget. And so I get that ahead of time, and so we make sure we put it in. And we just do overlay projects. So I usually pick, as you can see, it used to say various and projects, street projects. And so now they want you to specify exactly which project. So I always put extra projects in case something falls through on one of them. I still have other ones to ask for the funding and invoice them.
And Lila, help me, if I recall, the reason we do this with the state is because the state gets federal money and it kind of washes the federal money they, the state, have uses and the criteria... Because there's different criteria.
There's different criteria, and so...
Federal money.
For a overlay project, it's just to do that federal process for funding is, you know, it's much more difficult.
Right.
Than state rules.
So what we're doing is laundering federal money through the state to wash off some of the heavier regulations with federal money, quite frankly.
And we leave a little behind. And we leave a little behind.
The state always takes a haircut, yes.
Yeah, they take that 6%.
Yes.
Yeah, so we started really with the $101,802, and we get a little bit less than that, so.
All right. So, any other questions of Lila of this process? As she's indicated, it's an annual thing that we do. With that, entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ODOT Fund Exchange Agreement 33145 and designate City Manager or his designee to execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a second from Casper. Any discussion, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. All right. City Manager, City Attorney, report?
I have two items to... Mr. Mayor? The first is, on your desk before you is a two-page document on the outside agency grant application. We have been working with the City Council Subcommittee that reviewed all the applications last year, and we've incorporated the changes that they have made. Normally, this is an administrative thing, and it would have stopped here. However, there is one request that we felt needed, actually, City Council's nod and approval on. And that is to change the name from outside agency grant application to nonprofit grant application.
Question?
Nonprofit agency?
It would be nonprofit.
What if it's not?
It could be agency, nonprofit, or it could be nonprofit. No, it's nonprofit grant application.
Does it have to be a nonprofit?
Does it have to be a nonprofit?
If I...
I mean, part of question number five is proof of their nonprofit status.
Okay.
And I just want to say that the city as a government body can provide funding to a nonprofit agent, not agent, but a nonprofit organization. So that falls within that...
I have no idea of the history of the original name, outside agency.
We looked for that.
Yeah.
We looked through all of our code to see if we could find any reference to that, and we could not.
Yeah.
So I didn't... As far as I know, it goes back many years, and I don't know where that came from.
And again, a reminder, this is... We have in the past, as a city, provided funding to nonprofits in various amounts, basically who serve the city of Lincoln City and its citizens.
The other change of note in this is that we did change the date at which they would be awarded, but left the time in which they are passed... They are actually given to the agencies. We tried to tie it so it coincided a little bit more with the approval of the budget, because we would be getting applications for an amount that had not even been approved by the Budget Committee or City Council. So we tried to tie the application due date and processing date so it fit more along the lines with when the budget would be adopted. However, we have traditionally given the funds out in August, and that would remain the same.
Mr. Mayor? Just... It says Courtney Librato a few times, so if they're... If the Executive Assistant Manager...
Says what?
It's named an employee as opposed to the position.
Okay. Can you change that? That's no problem.
And that really isn't the deadline, is it? June 6th, or wouldn't?
It would be.
Oh. So the budget wouldn't be approved by then?
No, but by that time, it has made it through the Budget Committee, and we have a good sense. We would not be able to meet that deadline if we had to wait clear until July.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other question? Any problem with the name change?
No.
Okay. That's an easy one.
The second item that I have for you is just really to mention, some of you are aware that there had been a protest on the notice of intent to award a bid on Northeast Surf. That will be coming to you in your first meeting in May. The reason why it didn't come today is because we had received this protest. The authority has been given to me to make that decision, and we denied the protest. And so that is... Since some of you are aware of that, that's the reason I'm bringing that up.
So then, an appeal is coming to council? Is that what you're saying?
No. The appeal is to me.
Oh, okay. So we...
Correct.
Issues final.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Chandler?
No.
Any... Mr. Apicello, anything from legal? Okay. Moving on, then, we have any actions necessary from the executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself from the further deliberations for potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
I did not attend that meeting.
And thank you. We'll bring you back for comments. Any... There were different properties? Entertain any motion on Property A?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to direct staff to begin purchase procedures for Property A.
Second. So we have a motion to proceed with purchase of Property A with a second from Mr. Hogland? Oh, Mr. Hogland, Mr. Parsons? Any discussion?
I just say, I just... There's more than one lot. Do we need to...
Well, Property A was all three, yeah.
So we're talking about Property A as identified on the confidential executive session memorandum.
Right.
From today's date, okay? Just because we'll be asked, what is Property A? Confidential. It's described in the memo. And I think the counselor's question is, is it... Is it the entire property or all or the... The Property A or any portion of it?
The entire Property A or any portion of it.
All right. We have a motion with a second.
Okay, so the...
To pursue negotiations.
All... Okay, so the decision on whether it's all or portion is down the line, basically.
Roll call? Is that what we need on this one? Each one? Okay.
Hogland or Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then any motion regarding Property B?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to direct the staff to sell Property B.
Second.
We have a motion with a second from Counselor Hinton to sell. Proceed with what is required by the city in order to sell property.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Coos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then we have Property C.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to direct the staff to obtain further information regarding the sale or lease of Property C.
Second. A motion and a second, Mr. Parsons? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then finally, Property D.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to direct staff to purchase the two additional separate lots of Property D.
To proceed anyway in the purchase?
To proceed in the purchase.
Second. We have a second from Mr. Parsons. Any... No questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments? We can then go to City Council comments. Mr. Hogland, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. I had the wonderful opportunity to go to Bellknap Hot Springs this last weekend, where I overheard my children, I believe, overheard other people in the hot springs talking about the float drop, so...
Really?
Kudos to the Explor Lincoln City team. And they said, oh, no, it just floats out everywhere. everywhere, you know, and so it was, it was, it was pretty cool to be there in the middle of nowhere, and we got brought up in what we do, so, thank you, and it was really nice to hear that.
Good. Thank you very much. Counselor Mark?
I'll just reiterate the congratulations to Explore Lincoln City, that was, do we get to see the, that video display, that, with the animation?
I think if you come to the mayor's office, the plaque and videos will be playing, you know.
Is that going to be posted on the city website? And, thank you, and I have to nitpick a little page, we've got proclamation with a little misspelling there on page 56. It looks like the official proclamation, the word at the top is a misspelling.
Okay, thank you, editor. Anything else?
No.
All right, Counselor Hinton?
I have two little things. One is that this last weekend, there was a tiny house display that was open at the community center parking lot, and Counselor Kooz and I tag teamed that with people representing the manufacturer. And we received more than 75 visitors to the tiny house. About five of them were kids, so I don't know if you count them or not, but we did. But there were quite a few, even after it was locked up and, and the representative went somewhere else. I was there with the locked up tiny house, and I talked to 12 people at that time. So people are curious, and then we have ideas for the future for that, and my second thing is just Happy Earth Day, everybody.
Great. Counselor Kooz? Nothing. Okay. Counselor Casper? You can wait. Huh?
This is for.
You got a surprise or something, or?
Who do I want to tell you about?
Sorry, this is embarrassing. I should have tapped you on the shoulder. Counselor Kooz is going to an expo of tiny houses?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about that.
At the end of, it's the 28th, well, it's 27th, 28th, but 27th got busy, so on the 28th, oh, I know, get close, right? On the 28th, Oregon Expo has a tiny homes display, so we're going to go there and talk to the vendors and see what we've got going on in Oregon, so.
Agreed.
And then hopefully, they can bring a show here.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one thing. The Oregon Mayors Association, every year, has a program called If I Were Mayor, and it's for students in our school district across the state. And I'm pretty excited because it begins about now, where we, we, as a council, if we like the idea, would meet with the principals in the elementary, middle school, and high school, and the idea is to promote a poster for the elementary, an essay contest for the middle school, and digital media presentation for the high school as to why, if I were mayor, I would. And the winners of this contest would be judged in our local area, and those winners would go on to the state. The state winners would receive an Apple iPad, an Apple II iPad Air tablet, and there will be one winner in each category. So to me, this is pretty exciting and a great way to initiate civil involvement. I've always wanted to see a young person working with Mr. Anderson telling us what they would do if they were mayor. And so if you all think this is a good idea, what happens is we would meet with the principals, and then in the summer, teachers would have information to inject into their curriculum in September, and then this would go on, and then their applications would be submitted May 10th of next year, and they would be chosen in August, and the winner statewide would go to the Oregon Mayors Association Conference and be recipients with their parents at this meeting. But I just think it's a very interesting way to promote involvement in our city and actually see how our government works. So if you folks, my colleagues, my dear friends here are interested, Mayor Anderson has kindly agreed to meet with the principals and myself in the future for further discussion to see if they're interested in doing this. What do you think?
And Counselor Casper has agreed to organize this thing. Take the lead on it, so, that was the key.
Excellent.
That's great. Okay.
So is that a consensus to promote her? All right, consider her to go?
I'll pursue that. I understand they do meet in May, so I'll get back to you. The other little teeny item was, I know we will be getting evaluation of the people that we supervise soon, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more information about that soon, and I just wanted to put a reminder about that process.
Counselor?
Just one thing, it's a Community Days Week, and so the one thing I'm going to promote is the Ducky Derby and Nickel Dive. It's on Thursday at the community center from 5:30 to 7:00. Purchase a duck, it's $10. It's a 50/50. If your duck gets picked, you get half of the money. The other half goes to middle school sports. Yeah, middle school sports is the only thing that doesn't get paid for by a nonprofit or by the school in this town. So at 5:30 to 7:00, $10, you can buy a duck at the community center or at the high school. After they draw the ducks, they're going to throw in $100 worth of nickels in the pool, and kids can dive down and collect the money, and what they collect, they get to keep. That is going to be a lot of nickels.
That's great.
I have a few things, too, and had to do, as a reminder, this is Community Days Week, and I know you counselors have already forgotten about your obligation on Thursday at the food drive. You have noon to 1:00.
It is in my.
Noon to 1:00 in front of IGA North with me. You're hawking for food. Got it. Of the Lincoln City pantry.
Excited.
That's perfect, because that's when my daughter's cheer squad's going to be there, too.
I know it, I, that's why we're there. Now, some of the other of us, you know, are doing things, like I'm reading Saturday, and any of you interested at 11:30 in the morning, I have a great novel that I'm reading at the outlet mall, at the bookstore. It's called Dragons Love Tacos. So I've been practicing, there's a lot of big words, and so I'll be, be there reading with my fellow readers. Let's see, the other things I have is just as a note, Congressman Schrader is going to be here on Friday, using these chambers, visiting with electeds in the county, and I think you've all gotten notices, certainly welcome, and I think we've notified that as a public meeting or. So the other thing, you have budget committee coming up next Monday and the Monday following. So as much as we'd like to get together, we'll be on April 29th and May 6th, 5:00 here. And let's see, the other things I have is, May 15th is a spaghetti dinner fundraiser. This is for day camp, Lincoln City kids scholarships, to go to day camp out at Bene Breth Camp during the summer. It's not too early to be thinking about what you're going to be doing with kids this summer, and help, if you don't have any, you can help fund scholarships. Spaghetti dinners, $10, so it's a good time. Tours at 5:00, dinner at 6:00, out at Bene Breth Camp. And finally, I noticed the chief is in the back watching me. I know I have a summons that I'm to report for jail on Wednesday. For those of you who didn't know, I got subpoenaed and charged. I will be reporting on the 24th. This is a fundraiser for family promise. I've been busy raising my bail in anticipation of handing bail money over. I'm a little short, so I would plead with you, when I call you on Wednesday, please answer the phone, because I need bail money on the 24th.
Oh, wait a minute. No, 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 I'm in, I'm in jail, too, so please, get my phone call. Answer my phone call.
I'm in jail as well, for the record.
Everybody had my time first. You know, I let you guys all, you, none of you.
And I didn't know the rules that we're supposed to be doing it ahead of time.
Solicitation, once again. So, first things come, so when you see my phone number appear, please answer.
I think I'll be there a long time.
All right, any other comments? Good to the order? Only 7:20, and make note, please, that this is two meetings in a row that well out before 8:00.
Saying, get used to it?
Get used to it. I don't know who. Thank you.
Until budget next week.